I mean, suppose she wasn't gonna be.
Just gonna set in.
So we're all here. Thank you for keeping me straight.
And just heads up for me, the cell coverage and the wifi in this hotel have been horrible. So I'm gonna probably not put my camera on unless I need to be on. But otherwise, if I drop, it's not because I wanted to drop, it's because I got booted out from my coverage, but I'm fully intending to be here. So, okay.
At least the curtains are nice.
Well. Called Paris, so like, it's like a Paris-themed hotel.
It's okay then.
Okay, alright, so I'll be on a.
Nice to see your face. Okay, shall we? It's ready. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We have a quorum with six of us here. Um, first, this is approval of the minutes. I sent some edits in earlier. Does anyone have any other changes? Wanna make a motion to approve? Okay, Sam?
I'll say.
And Doug's seconds. All those in favor? I pass unanimously.
I just abstain as I wasn't present last week.
Thanks. And I think you probably saw the discussion about including presentations on the webpage and Kim suggested in a chat that so that they're part of the whole one packet, which I think was great. Okay, um, so our next item of business is public comment. And I see a name I do not know, Maggie Saunders. Maggie, are you a member of the public who wants to speak to us?
Hi, um, I just, I wanted to tune in. My hope was to be there in person, but my schedule did not allow today. And we had one of your members at our event this past week, weekend, at the poetry reading, and I just had a question regarding the Boulder, um, new Boulder Public Library District and the, um, any intentions to, um, outreach to other programs in the Boulder Public Library regarding the funds that are present with the community within the Boulder, um, Public Library Foundation Fund.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't quite understand your question, Maggie. Could you try again? You were breaking up just a little bit.
Oh, um, thank you. Yeah, so, um, there is the, the Boulder, um, Public Library, the Founda- Foundation Fund. I might be, I might be misnaming that.
Okay. So the Boulder Public Library Foundation is a separate organization that provides funding to the library in various ways.
Yes, okay. And my question is if there would be any plans within the new library district to be able to, use those funds that are from the Boulder Public Library Foundation and outreach to other programs that are sponsored by the Boulder Public Library.
Yeah, so, so Chris Barge is here. Chris is the Executive Director of the Foundation. Um, why don't we let him see if he can try and answer?
Hi Maggie. Um, I would be happy to connect with you directly. Um, not sure exactly, precisely what you're asking, but if you represent an organization in the community, part of our role is fundraising for the library and part of our role is advocacy, so, and awareness, so I'm always happy to meet with community groups and find out more about their interests and activities. Would, would you send me an email so we can connect?
I would love that. I think that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, my email is chris@boulderlibraryfoundation.org.
Awesome. Thank you so much for all of the work that you do. We love the, the library very much.
Well, library lovers make it all possible. Thank you, Maggie.
Thanks for joining us, Maggie, and asking the question. Okay, um, so I think our first agenda item is a preview of the budget.
Oh, we're there already. Um, well, open to feedback. I, um, this is a preview. I mean, I'm sure we sent it to you on Friday so you would get over sticker shock in some ways, which it is, uh, a transformational, believe, I think I just said it in the overview, I think with the conversations with Jen and Sylvia and the Finance Committee, there is, and I do have every intent of bringing back information. Some comparisons around the estimated, uh, cost and refuse for, uh, that's previously referred to as internal cost allocation. So we'll have some comparisons from the other zones. We'll also have some comparisons around, uh, what percentage of increase that you're looking at across the board. Obviously, the big ones, um, big ones are in facilities, uh, is huge, uh, increase because prior to this did not actually show up on our budget, but, you know, consistently went between 1.2, 1.5. Nevertheless, it is a large jump into what you're looking at going forward. And then, you know, the service responses began as a, you know, restoration, but we don't actually call the restoration because we're going way beyond the restoration. We're actually rolling out services around new services that they've never had in the entirety of Carnegie or the Canyon Theater or a number of different things. And so the proposal is to, um, fund each of those programs uh, to go basically from zero to sixty, uh, in the course of a year. Some of the costs that the Personnel Committee had also, no, I'm sorry, Personnel, Finance Committee had also asked us to price out where the costs associated with wage increase, uh, which is one, the pay leveling, which I believe it's principal, you have already approved, but this is roughly dollar amount that we're looking at now, uh, as well as what the cost of the minimum wage increase, uh, would be. You have not made a proposal of that. What, what will come forward in a proposal from the Personnel Subcommittee tonight or not? Uh, but now we're getting to that time where it is important to make that decision. So the other big thing is like, it's you know, sixty percent of our budget is personnel. Sixty percent of everything that you are gonna wanna do in a public library is gonna have a staffing cost and/or a service person level cost to it, pretty much. Um, we oftentimes overlook in that is that, um, people still come here heavily for stuff, right? They come here for free books and music and movies and all the things that they can get online. And so I'm pleased, I'm super pleased that we're able to put in a, uh, a huge increase into materials budget uh, that takes us beyond what I think I had initially promised you, which was that we would have a matching, match the current amount that we expend on patrons to, to an expanded patron base. We're actually going beyond that even, um, by ten or fifteen percent. And I think moving forward in the future, that is a place for us to be mindful. I'd like that's there in my mind for a Board of Trustees. There are several like Canary in the Coal Mine things that you can look at. If you don't have time to read the entire budget, it's like, is the staffing budget over seventy? Then I think you have legitimate questions to ask. If the, if the budget for materials drops below ten percent, I think you have legitimate questions. Ideally, in my mind, we would be at sixty or roughly thereabouts with personnel and perpetuity. And for the expenditures on the budget, although I don't know of any libraries that are there, my dream scenario is that we're at fifteen, sixteen percent of our entire budget is spent on materials now. In these next five to ten years, we have a heavy lift in terms of facilities. And so I don't know if we're gonna get to fifteen to sixteen percent of material expenditures. But I should hope that at the time that we catch up on the facility's backlog, we are in a position to use that money that had previously been going to get our buildings back into shape and put them back into buying more ebooks, buying more physical books, buying more kids' books, buying more, whatever it is that medium is that's failed. And I'm happy to open it up and get any questions. Oh, you know, I, I should talk a little bit about the cafe. So the cafe has been for the past almost ten years, uh, something that the public expects. It was the top thing they asked for in the renovation when we did the renovation in twenty fourteen. Uh, we had a run of success for about five years with Farmers Market. It closed down obviously in twenty twenty. We brought back Ton and Seen this last year. Um, and that was through a rigorous process where we were interviewing, had a lot of great proposals. Uh, in the end, it wasn't Ton and Seen. I don't believe any vendor could have made money. I, I sincerely doubt. The cost of labor is high, uh, the cost of providing food to the public, uh, the cost of producing that food and provide to the public is high, and the traffic just wasn't there. Um, and so that led to difficulty in keeping the space staffed. Um, but from my calculations way back in twenty fourteen, and when the community asked for a cafe in Nobo, you know, you can take a look at your account, kind of, and do a business plan based on one out of every one of these people is gonna buy a drink, and not if one of, everyone of these people is gonna buy uh, something to, uh, eat. And those are mostly fair assumptions, but Nobo never had the traffic to do it, and so it's subsidy. So then the question is, how much does it really cost to staff the bridge in such a way that the area is activated? And it's free from being just a neglected area. My calculation of that cost way back when we got the Farmers Market was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year would be the cost that we were actually staffing the space and providing programming on the spa- on that floor. And so getting a tenant, uh, that admittedly paid very little rent, uh, to occupy the space and provide them with an opportunity to make a little money outside and run a business was a great deal for us because it was a cost-cutting measure. And so in this budget, I am proposing, you know, a minimal, uh, half that, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a way for us to subsidize the future cafe. I think the plan is really kind of just a draft in my head at this point, but it's, uh, something that Jennifer and I and the team will work out over the course of the next couple of months. Uh, in my mind, it is the, you know, the, uh, library, friends and family, almost break even cafe. And we will do what I wish we would have done when the film program locked. We are offering basically food at, at cost, uh, and paying for labor to provide labor and volunteers and hopefully partners and groups that will come in from the community that owners lousy with food industry and prepackaged goods and bring some of those people in to help participate in a program where we can be proud of it. It drives traffic to the area and reactivates the space.
So is the current provider done then, or?
She's done. She returned in notice, uh, Tuesday. We've, uh, written.
Kind of assumed that because it hadn't been open for a while.
Yeah, they, they struggled money-wise. We knew they never, they never once got into the black.
Yeah.
Beginning, and it's in the red. And, uh, the owner Cynthia Diaz, uh, you know, has run a successful coffee shop in Denver.
Yeah.
She is, uh, the offspring of a family who's run a successful diner in Southern Colorado for decades. Uh, she was very disappointed and upset that it was unable to work. But yeah, you know, cost of labor right now, um, you know, I've priced out now in recognition, the cost of a barista, you know, prices vary, but anywhere nineteen is the low end. That's, I think, what she was paying her staff. But yeah, there are some barista jobs that you see now that are in the vicinity of twenty seven.
I would imagine.
So to keep good help and provide a service to the public and also provide a space, we'll try to turn it into a, to be used, which is not necessarily a money maker. Shouldn't turn out to make money from that, from that space. We'll have to talk about it, but I, I think it's a great golden opportunity for us to partner with other organizations, uh, you know, use your imagination, FFA, Bridge House, a lot of different places where we could advertise, like this month's proceeds go to FFA, um, and work in partnership with that other community.
What about the, you know, the, um, Meals on Wheels market?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if we've talked to them. It's like.
We have not. I.
We could sell their goods and here and.
You know, I'm, uh, well.
Anyway, we don't have to solve it. I, I.
No, I think it's come up a number of times since I was feeling is whether or not we would be willing to subsidize one vendor. And I'm, I'm disinclined to do so.
Right.
I'm inclined to invite everyone in, and should somebody be able to make some amount of money, it will be on the conditions that we set. And that is that they're selling it at cost, uh, to their customers. And that's what our intention will be. I think probably we'll start out with something simple, coffee and toast and jelly, and we'll grow it from there. As if we see that we can actually generate traffic, because that's the critical thing. We have to bring traffic back to the downtown library. Our numbers overall are recovering right across the library district, uh, across the library system. But it's because, you know, Meadows has seen a forty percent growth. It's Reynolds has seen a thirty percent growth. The numbers at Main Library are still down. They're down from the war every year last year. And that is a reflection of the communities, my belief. It's a number of things. The bathrooms are an issue. Uh, lack of computers is an issue. Um, but it's also a reminder of the community's sense of of safety within the downtown corridor. And that's something that, uh, it's gonna have to be, we can't tell people what, you know, feel safe. It's safe. Like, they have to experience that for themselves. So you see a lot of people coming back, but not everyone. And it's most notably absent is a elderly clientele that was here.
And I personally really support the notion of doing whatever we need to do to get that going, including subsidizing it. Um, one observation I would have in this, maybe off-base, maybe when I was here, but it seems like when Seed was running it, we had a lot of use from families and kids. They go from Story Hour over there, and Seeds had a menu in some ways that I think catered to kids. It went beyond that, too. I wonder if thinking about this marketing thing, you look at who comes in the door, but also kind of who our base patrons are. If it might be worthwhile doing a little surveying of people of, you know, what they'd like to see.
Yeah.
Um, just as that, as.
I think there's time to do that.
Students, students and people who are sitting there studying and then kids, little kids that.
Yeah.
Big team.
If we can make coffee available at cost, it's gonna be a lot less than we pay for it in most coffee shops. If that's our guiding assumption. From that point, I think we can bring food items on and test them. I think it could be an interesting market for the food industry in Boulder to test, uh, various products. They're always prototyping, especially packaged goods. There's a lot of packaged goods that emerge from Boulder. Is that something that they're willing to bring in to see if the public is really loves their whatever bar or whatever snack it is? And I, um, you know, the one thing that we would probably continue that Seeds started and we will, and Ton and Seen followed is we're not doing m- most allergen-related things, nuts primarily are not something that we'll probably, so you won't be able to buy a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. Uh, Seeds did sunflower and jellies.
Coffee and tea, I hope.
David.
Coffee and tea will be the main thing. Yes.
You said you got to this one twenty-five A number by having the two, two hundred and fifty thousand that was the prior cost estimate of running that space on the bridge. What, um, do you have good reason to believe it'll, it'll, you will be able to reduce the cost to half? Tell, tell me a little bit about, you know, that sort of, that ballpark.
Yeah, so that ballpark is really to break even. So we would hire two baristas. The cost of hiring two baristas is sort of a, you know, close to a hundred, right? So two baristas full-time in the space, if that's what we hire, or a barista and a service person, whatever it is, uh, then the assumption is that we're breaking even on food and coffee. So it's really, that's the cost of labor, uh, alone. And uh, that it's counting on there being an activity eating other than what other activities we would have to provide on the bridge, which would be program schedule, the kinds of things that we would do in an ordinary space. If we wanted to activate space and make it a viable, attractive community space, we're not factoring in those program costs. So it's really about, you know, we have a coffee vendor. Can we manage to pay for the coffee? Uh, and break even in sales? So is that a dollar a cup of coffee? Is it fifty cents a cup of coffee? I don't really know. We're gonna have to test that.
I'm just thinking.
Providing it for free.
The idea of, I love the idea of partnering with CPG or other Boulder food companies. I wonder if like there's, there's reason to model in a percent of an FTE to manage that, right? To sort of manage like just the product partnerships or, you know, some, somebody who's really, um, kind of dedicated to that because I think that that could be an awesome, awesome use of the space. Um, but if you don't have somebody um, really focused on that, like, I don't imagine the baristas will do that. Uh, we might, it might just not come to pass. So.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's my assumption is that will be me at first, attempting to manage some of those partnerships. And, you know, it may be me working the cash register. We gotta get to January first, but like, I'm not above. I wanna see what the cafe, I, I wanna ensure that it works, right? And I think there's probably no better way to exemplify the whole idea of it being, uh, library, family and friends is being drawn center. And so like, we'll give it a shot. You know, for toast and baked goods and stuff like that, you could buy them from a bakery and sell them at the same price we bought them for. It's easier for me to imagine in terms of bread and toast and biscuits and simple things we can buy and pull. But, you know, there's also no need for us to, um, provide solely legally baked goods. Like, I, there's not, there's not anything other than ourselves saying we won't sell Twinkies. And so like, I'm I'm fine with selling a Twinkie if that's what the customer's house doing.
I think, I think Jen's point is well-taken. I mean, looking at, looking at the long term.
Yep.
Um, you know, one of the goals we had in the master plan was to create a position or positions to create the partnership program around the library. And it seems like it's in that same wheelhouse. Um, and I mean, it's fine to sort of put it together, have you can put it together to begin with, but for long-term success, I think having somebody who could work on those partnerships and bring them in, you know, whether that's part of the program's team or the partnership's team, however you're structuring that, or someone who's specifically focused on the cafe. I do think that's worth thinking about. I think that was a good suggestion.
Yeah, we have a draft of, it's on the twenty twenty-four budget, but we have a draft around the communications or partnership coordinator within the communications and engagement group. Uh, that's not something we're planning on rolling out in twenty twenty-four because we are planning on rolling out a lot in twenty twenty-four with communications. And we have nobody so far. So the idea is that we would hire a manager first. I think we'll be able to bring in on basic line communications. There has been quite a lot of discussion among staff, and I think among you all that brought it up, at least Anita has around coordinating a singular or at least a uniform voice around social media. Uh, that's something that is in the twenty twenty-four budget, as is a, um, a language, uh, is, so personally would be, uh, capable of working primarily in Spanish, uh, in conjunction with our outreach program. Uh, so which is a lot of where partnerships emerge, but they're not formalized in this contract. We're working with a lot of partner groups or like-minded groups uh, through the outreach program. Uh, but it's not a, it's not a place to formalize partnership in capital.
I have a question about this document when we're done with the cafe.
Yeah, I have some questions about this document also when we're done with this.
Okay, let's go.
Um, okay, I, I had a question.
Please.
Um, the, when, on page five.
Same question.
Uh, when you say that the increase is to the twenty-four budget compared to twenty-three, um, do you mean we're going from four to four and a half million? We were four million in
No.
twenty twenty-four, or we're incrementally increasing for the twenty-four budget from four to four and a half?
Uh, we are increasing the staffing budget from roughly six million dollars a year to roughly ten million dollars.
Okay.
So staffing budget as a portion of our overall budget won't be sixty percent, I don't think, in twenty twenty-four. But that's a reasonable number.
Right.
In libraries of what ordinarily would cost because of the cost of, uh, facilities and assuming some of the those costs, the primarily facilities. I don't know that we're gonna get any of those other moderate numbers that I would like to get to at some point where we're looking at roughly sixty and sixteen or sixteen, fifteen.
Okay.
Yeah, these are, these are all increases.
Okay.
So that's like a range of predicted increase?
Yeah, well, more increases.
It's not four to four and a half. It's four to four and a half million increase.
Yeah, okay. Good. Good, I, yeah, that would, um, so I would have understood this better with side-by-side numbers, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four. I, I now understand what you're saying there, and I see why you stated it that way, but it would have been, I think, this clearer, you know? Yeah.
And it's the challenge to, to chime in in here. You know, the question is, what's the base? I assume you're using the twenty twenty-three operating budget as the base. And so, you know, this is the whole thing we had in the campaign. Which number are you using?
Well, I, I, it doesn't include internal allocation, right? So it's.
With thirteen, no, that was, that was rhetorical. I wasn't asking. That was rhetorical. So, um, I think it would be more clear. I mean, I think we know the city's cost was thirteen. So is this on the base of the operating budget as shown in the city budget? Or, and that gets to Sam's point. I know it's complicated to lay that out, but I think we need to do that to help people understand what we are, what we're getting to.
I will put some time into that this week if I get the time. Um, and if not, we'll have to delay the first reading because I, you know, the thirteen point six million dollars is what the city has estimated in twenty eighteen. Um, I think we did get updates in twenty twenty-three about the internal cost allocation. I don't believe those were widely shared. Uh, the internal cost allocation, the city estimates is three point six, I think. Um, but the majority of that is staff, right? Including the facilities cost, which is one and a half million of that three point six is facilities costs supposedly. The majority of that is either staffing or contracts.
Right.
Contracted stuff. So it, it will be difficult to translate apples to apples. Uh, but I, I can show you, I could show you whatever it is I can.
I wonder if you could do it in two ways. One way would be simply to say, this is what the city said it costs to run the library, and this is what we're going to be running it for totals. So we have a thirteen point six to whatever this gross is, and then do a comparison of these categories. So personnel expenses. Now that might get complicated with the, facilities piece. I think that's the only place where there was staffing, right? But, but, you know, don't make it crazy-making to try and break it down that.
No, I, I'm just less concerned about this year's budget than I am about next year. You know what I mean? Like, because it's so hard to break out. So it's seventeen point two, right? The twenty-one or whatever we're gonna, you know, and so but if you include the city allocation, the three point six plus the thirteen point six, that's what seventeen.
Well, there's the budget and there's the expenditures.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Ask for expenditures from the city. I don't know that we'll get them. I'm, I'm not planning on it. We stopped tracking them when you told us you didn't want them. So like, I don't, we'll have the budget.
Right. Right, okay.
So you, given a budget without current internal cost. So yeah, it jumps from basically thirteen point six to nineteen point two.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the difference. And so like, that, that should be easily showable in total. The difficulty will come in compares.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't lose any hair over that, trying to make that kind of a comparison. That's too much in the weeds. These one-time costs, though, does this also include revenues from twenty twenty-three that are part of the transition? That was the other thing that was confusing for me.
One-time.
Personnel and the non-personnel expenses and the capital investment are clearly all things once we're a district, but this one-time technology infrastructure, not this reconfiguration.
Uh, those are the anticipated costs for twenty twenty-four, not the twenty twenty-three cost. So you've already approved a contract of one and a half million for the, capital infrastructure and IT. Uh, this is not, this is not, this is an addition.
So this is really continuing the transition into twenty twenty-four. We spent a bunch in twenty twenty-three and then we got more to spend in twenty twenty-four.
That's not the budget. The budget is requesting funding, I think probably roughly half of that, one to one and a half million is for, uh, space reconfiguration at Main to accommodate approximately forty new staff members. Many of whom are gonna have to have a door that closes and a and a wall that goes to the ceiling. So I, I don't know. We're putting a budget into it, but we have not, we've not put out an RFP, we've not.
Yeah, I think just such, you know, general couple of words explaining that that is the nature of that one-time expense would be helpful. And the other thing I think that would be helpful in the budget presentation is to remind people that in twenty twenty-four, we will also be paying the city back for twenty twenty-three operating costs. Because I think there's gonna be people who sort of. Because I think there's gonna be people who sort of come in and say, well, we've got all this money from twenty twenty-three and all this money for twenty twenty-four. What are we doing with it? So the more we can say, look, this is what we spent in twenty twenty-three and here's what we spent on these other, you know, transition expenses will be helpful. Now, maybe nobody will be interested and we won't have any questions. We'll see.
I have another question.
Go for that, please.
So I'm looking at headcount, and I think this would be also, I, I realize this is a preview, and so, um.
What's your, you on?
Uh, I'm on page, I'll start on page six. Um, I see eighteen additional, I think those are incremental heads. And then on page seven, another ten incremental heads, I believe. Um, and then on the last page, page eight, there's sixteen uh incremental. So I just wanted, it might be helpful, um, just to show those different departments. And what their twenty twenty-three headcount is and what your proposed twenty twenty-four headcount, that might be helpful.
Let's see, well.
So just so I see, like, I, I don't know if any of these are like double counted or not. I don't think they are, but, um, yeah, okay.
I think, I think the amount's forty-two.
Are you being consistent on that number for a long time? So.
Yeah, it's, it's right. I mean, it's in that wheelhouse. I, we need to sit down and see which ones really roll in twenty twenty-four and which ones are twenty twenty-five. I mean, there is an additional headcount in twenty twenty-five as well, Gunbarrel.
Right.
You know, I think the public services number here I'll have to double check. Well, no, we show it, we show it. So public services is broken out twice. Uh, the one is, uh, no. Yeah, the rest are across the entire system.
And I assume, go ahead.
Is it, was there additional handouts that came in a packet or am I just not looking on the right pages?
Um, this was in the packet. It's, it's page, we're looking right now at page twenty-five of the packet, Sylvia.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the budget is in the latter part.
Me too. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
But we're using the page numbers from the document.
Yeah, sorry, I'm using the wrong page numbers. Yeah.
And um, the estimated non-personnel cost for new functions, that's the cost allocation comparison, right? Um, effectively.
The new personnel wages. Yeah, those.
Yeah, that's all. I mean, that.
But that doesn't include the non, that doesn't include the capital costs, right? So so what it, what the new, it's just the estimated personal wages, but yeah, you had the roughly two million dollars on there for capital cost plus adding in perhaps acquiring or financing a building in Gunbarrel and all the renovation costs associated with whatever we decided to do.
Those weren't in the city's cost allocation anyway. So what I'm seeing here is the city estimated three point six million for cost allocation and we're paying two million.
Yeah, it's, it's not apples to apples.
It's not, the apples to apples.
And we're not, we're not showing, we're showing the HRIS and payroll systems as well as the finance systems as non-personnel expenses. So where, what you would have seen in internal cost allocation.
Right.
It would have been lumped in as a percentage of the HRIS system. That timekeeping software would have been a part of the HR funding that was allocated for the library in terms of internal cost allocation.
So is it fair to say we would be adding two million and one point four million minus the communications? So the estimated new personnel wages.
Communications is the one where, yeah, those, I think those, I may have to go back and double check. I I think two fifty-seven is the internal cost allocation amount and it is the amount that we will uh show.
Okay, so then we're at three point four million. If you take those two tables together as the cost allocation table. Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to help people have a, have an honest account sometimes. As much as we can, realizing it's not bulletproof.
I think, I think this document will go better when we include like the document we looked at last week. I think that's probably, this is just the highlights, I, I, as I understand, and so, yeah, I get.
Yeah.
No, you'll see a breakout in the spreadsheet and we're gonna attempt so that the proposal that we're trying to work through is, it is a spreadsheet, right? Then there is the visualization, which highlights elements that we have highlighted here in the uh, in this preview.
Right.
It's Carnegie, it's Dobbo, it's Gunbarrel, it's all these different things. We're not gonna, I don't know that we've discussed how to highlight spending three and a half million dollars in capital on possibly purchasing a building in Gunbarrel and, and uh doubling the cost that we put into facilities.
Right.
That, that's probably not a, that's probably not a highlight picture, although maybe we do need one like that. Like, that could be our highlight reel could be the, the, the last sixty pages of the coming report, which is just.
No, no, I think those little bar charts or pie charts that you had presented.
We're gonna try to do a pie chart that combines.
Yeah.
Pie charts and, and photographs of highlighting.
Be fine.
And for that category, I think the, you know, the new Nobo branch and taking care of what we have would be a good way to find that. I think because we're spending money on taking care
I think it's a good story to tell to the public as well, you know, because that neglect is not on us.
Yeah. To be very aware of, but not just in the library, you know, buildings in Sydney, so.
Yeah, so I mean, in the past, you know, what the city facilities department showed us, I have no reason to doubt it, was between one point two and one point five million dollars total, um, with staff and contractors and everything. We'll leave we'll leave ours as two point three million without Gunbarrel and without staff. So the magnitude is uh significant magnitude.
And it's significant backlog of nine to eleven million dollars to be paid over ten years, which should also be part of the story.
Yeah.
So, yeah, because I mean, it, it's really, when you start to break this out, the increase is really just kind of it's going to obviously table that and this restoration and expansion of services. Right? Because these first two are basically the cost allocation.
Yeah.
It's new to us because the city accounts for it in a different way. But it looks a lot less scary that way, I think.
Yeah, I mean, at least half of the positions that you're looking at in terms of the restoration, perhaps more, I'd have to go back and look up again, but been a little bit of a crazy week, uh, and I wrote this whatever.
In another lifetime.
But yeah, I think slightly more than half of those positions are just refilling positions that were canceled in twenty twenty. Uh, so that is the manager of resource services, the manager of Carnegie, that is, uh, you know, public service staff at the branches and at Maine, those are all coming back, we're adding uh some positions at Maine and at the branches. Uh, we're adding some positions with brand improvements and events, but I think two of those are uh makerspace positions.
Kara, I don't know if you can um kind of help us have some talking points as a board out of the budget that kind of picks up these high-level things so we're consistent. People reach out to us, um, because I think that's the story for us to be telling is, you know, we're we're building this new administrative apparatus, but that's part of the three point six, and then we're taking care of our buildings. I think another million dollars a year to what the city was spending in order to pay off this nine to eleven million dollars backlog over the next ten years. We're restoring the positions that were canceled in twenty twenty. That's half of the new ones. And then the rest of it is meeting the program, programmatic needs the community's been asking for. Mostly going back to two thousand.
Yeah, the program, uh, outreach program.
The materials.
Yeah, that, the outreach program is, you know, uh, we go up to speed, right? I got to what was projected in the master plan in twenty twenty-four. I'm not saying that's the end.
Yeah.
That's what it's gonna take to run the program. So it is, uh, it's quite possible, and I've talked to the staff about it. It is potentially the greatest place for growth that we might see, and we may need more resources for it than I've anticipated. Uh, they, the service increases to the branches are warranted, given what's happened. Some of the, you know, the service increase for Carnegie, the staffing increase for Carnegie is full of recognition that it's never been adequately staffed.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure it's even enough, but it's enough for us to uh add a manager and an archivist. And then, I mean, I seriously had conversations with the team about, like, if we want more hours, it doesn't, it's not cost-effective for us to have archivists sitting on a service desk. So if we really want to just open it up to the public and uh anybody, tourists can walk in and ask questions, we probably need to look at even more positions that are just public service-oriented positions, much like we provide here, that can provide a kind of orientation to the collection, highlight some of the displays and take an appointment. Somebody really wants to do research, but, um, yeah, so, you know, getting Carnegie to the place where it's really singing is gonna take some time and some testing. And then, you know, frankly, I think uh some of the shortages we've experienced here have resulted in some of the decline we've seen as well in terms of people coming. But it's a speculative idea. It's not a, it's not entirely data-driven, other than the fact that I know in twenty nineteen, our numbers were a lot higher, and I know we also had a lot more staff. In fact, we have fewer staff. There's, there's very few easy recipes in libraries. You know, the collection drives a lot, I can tell you that, and the amount of money you spend on new books drives a lot. Not buying classics, not buying, you know, twenty-year-old auto manuals. It's new books that drives numbers. And probably more important than anything is like service. How's your customer service? And we, we intentionally reduced the levels of service during the cutbacks that we saw during the pandemic. So service levels changed. I don't know if anybody noticed, but yeah, there's one whole desk that we removed from service at Maine Library. So bringing it back, does that give us something? Maybe.
So I think, Kara, if you can also capture the, I mean, I heard it's both restoring hours consistently, but then the branches, Meadows and Reynolds have seen thirty and forty percent increases in use. Thank you for doing that.
Great yearly thing that I can just sort of circulate before next week.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think it, yeah, connecting it with the ballot, not in the language, it'd be nice, just saying like, we promised uh expanded hours and the twenty twenty-four budget expands hours.
Restoring.
Restores hours. Yeah. We're gonna maintain the building. It does this, and we're gonna do the Gunbarrel branch and it, and it, we allocate this much to do that.
Good evening. The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
The other, other rooms don't have a speaker.
So that's the folder frequency. So before we move on, um, I uh, I either wasted four paragraphs or I did a good job because you have no questions about aggressively addressing the facilities. This has been a priority of mine for a long time, but I, I never was certain that the board's priority was that. It's, doesn't win us much. I don't know that people really care. Uh, I care. Um, I think it's important. I, I don't know that there's any, there's not necessarily a value to be gained for us. Uh, I, it, it is simply a matter of pride. But, and also a sense of responsibility. So I get the sense of you sharing that, then or you would have raised a question about.
I, I mean, I thought that was helpful and I also think that's the kind of thing that people won't pay attention to until it's a problem, right? Like, that's, like, if, if patrons are here and the roof is leaking, then all of a sudden they're gonna be up in arms about our, you know, inability to maintain the infrastructure that um, and I really, I mean, I really liked your whole narrative. Um, it was making me kind of excited about the work we're doing, honestly, but the, uh, but I thought that was like, you're framing it of like, this is, you know, part of the public's trust essentially that we're taking care of. I thought that framing was really nice. Um, but yeah, I think it's one of those things that nobody pays attention to until it breaks.
Yeah.
So, and then they care a great deal.
We are in moral agreement. I know Jen and Sylvia are in agreement because we had that discussion.
And you know.
Same.
Just remind you, in the survey that we did as part of the master plan, one of the things that came out, I mean, I just remember that. That's where I got that language of taking care of what we have. People were asked whether they wanted new facilities or they wanted us to put emphasis on taking care of what we have. And it was very strongly on taking care of what we have. I think we leaned into that. Sam, you gonna say something else?
No, I, you know, it's very exciting, this budget, and I think you called out what I see as the biggest challenge in the near term, which is getting people back here, you know? I mean, this is what I hear in the community. Like, we got all this money, it's empty, you know? And I, I, I want that to change, like you do and everybody does. Um, the branches are gonna take off even more than they have. Nobo is gonna be thriving, I believe, but this place is, you know?
Yeah.
That's our biggest challenge.
Yeah, and the Nobo Library was always, uh, I don't know if I've had this conversation with you before, it's bound to be a vampire, right? It's gonna be a vampire to certain extent. So we anticipate that it will drive new customers. There will be new people who get cards because there's a community library. But in reality, the saturation level with library cardholders is already high in both, or above seventy percent, which is on our, Denver is proud of forty-six, ours is something like seventies. So it's not about bringing in new users, it's making it more convenient for the users that are there, hopefully driving more frequent use. Uh, but they will also, I guarantee you, my, my assumption is that they are going to draw from both Maine and Meadows. So Gunbarrel patients currently, we've done surveys, they, the majority of them travel to Meadows. Traveling Meadows or to downtown to lesser extent Nobo. Nobo is convenient and the service is right. Everything checks out on those other angles. It's also gonna be a new building. Uh, people will come away from Maine to do it. And so what are we gonna provide in Maine that draws people back? And, you know, it's partly computers. We left them, we had one for several months. We brought back the laptops uh and tablets people could check out. And now we have two stationary computers. But yeah, so computers are back, bathrooms are still not open. Uh, it's not, it's not ideal. It's not convenient. Uh, it is being replicated in other places uh because of the success we've had in preventing misuse, right? And, um, but I have to say, I don't like it. I, I don't like it. I feel like it is a reminder uh to a lot of the public. Whether you believe it or not, like, there were people that found their rights to be violated by wearing a mask. There were people, if you remember, who found their rights to be.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building.
Significant portion of the public that hates uh that level of.
I don't want to be a complete downer about this. I mean, it is exciting to think about what plans could we develop to bring
Yeah.
the senior population here, you know?
It's adult programming. We've not done much. Those people, some of those people are let go. All people in the Canyon Theater are let go. Uh, this plan does call for a little bit of a different angle on the Canyon Theater. So we're running a pilot, probably won't start until the third quarter. But we're basically making another meeting room. It'll be free and open to anyone in the public. That's what we're gonna try first, right? It's not gonna be curated cultural programming, although there may be some of that. Uh, the majority of the focus will be on what the community wants to be. So if you wanna bring your friends and show a movie, you're welcome to do so. Uh, if you have a punk band and you wanna come and blast it at seventy-five decibels, you're welcome to do so. Welcome. We're not gonna, we're not, we're not going to, we're gonna free it up. In order to do that, we're providing technical support and hopefully improving the sound system, but there's not any major changes to this building, aside from the reallocation of space for offices.
So building on that, how is the meeting room use? I think we were at about seventy percent before COVID.
I'll have to check with, I'm sure, I'm sure she reported it to me recently. I don't know. It's, it's not terrible, I think. I mean, I mean, anecdotally, I come out of my office and I look and see the meeting rooms are full, um, but I don't know for a reason.
Just thinking if, if it's down, that might be an opportunity to encourage people to come back because it's so hard to find meeting space. You're just reminding people that the library is a place. You're doing it. Jen or Sylvia, you have a question?
Well, I just had a comment actually, and, and I think this is mostly just from being on all the budget and finance subcommittee meetings with David and with Jen. and finance subcommittee meetings with David and with Jennifer, like, I mean, it's really hard to put a budget together when you have a lot of unknowns like we're currently working with. And so I just want to say, you know, express my appreciation to David and, and the rest of the staff for like putting this together. I mean, it's no, it was not something that they just whipped up. It's been something that's been well thought out and, you know, all of the line items have been discussed. And I, you know, I just, I, I feel, for me, I feel just really, really proud of the fact that we have David and the staff at such a level that we are not having to actually do as much of the heavy lifting on the budget. So thanks, David. Thanks, Jennifer. I, you know, think you've just made our job as trustees so much easier through this process.
Thank you for that, Sylvia.
Yeah, thank you, Sylvia. And it does deliver on, I mean, like 2007, I wasn't even here. There are parts of the master plan, the tenure plan that were never executed on. This begins everything.
Sam's master plan universe.
Yeah. Everything from the 2000, 2018 master plans get a least a kick. Uh, I can't say that I know precisely where each of them ends or that we've done everything that's required, but they are all underway and I feel really good about that, I think. And then, you know, we accomplish those in the next two, three years, that's feasible, right? Some of them will grow beyond that and be a part of the next 2028 plan, which we won't refer to as a master plan, but refer to as a tenure plan. And I, I think I feel good about that.
And I thought this document was very helpful, by the way, chunking it down is full of direction. So thank you for the time and energy you put into that.
Yeah, thank you guys.
And I'm just surprised that the main library is down visitor wise. I'm here all the time. It seems like there's always people here, like lots of people, but.
And, and I, I think it's not everywhere.
Yeah.
So the kids area is somewhat back, right?
Yeah.
The bridge is not, this building is not, right?
Yeah, yeah.
If you, if you go from the kids area north.
Right.
There is no activation space and that, that is, uh, I think probably the gallery number is down. And then the second floor, the second floor is not packed in the manner in which it used to. And there's just not simply as many people walk through. You know, circulation numbers are coming back. Well, that is a major shift in the way in which we spend money. And frankly, getting to $1.6 million in the collection budget may not be enough because the cost of ebooks, we haven't even begun to have that conversation. Johnny's been around for them in the past, but the cost to the library is, you know, significantly higher.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
La biblioteca se cerrará en cinco minutos. Por favor concluya sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio. Gracias.
It has also been where our circulation growth has come from, really for the past almost 10 years. So there were years where the growth in ebook circulation was 300% a year. And that was when we knew that there was a market and we were not able to meet it. So that market where we had set it was, I was basing it off of the national sales market, yes, which is roughly 22 to 25%. So in order for us to get to 22, 25% of the circulation, we had to pump money into the bill, into that collection and move it away from things like DVDs. We were able to do that successfully and we, we've managed over the last couple of years for it to be roughly 25% of our circulation. Well, during the pandemic, it jumped to close to 35% of the circulation. That speaks to people not coming into the building for their checkouts. They've found hoopla during the pandemic. They found whatever medium they had and they don't have to wait in line. I mean, in many cases, they do have to wait, but they're not coming into the library to pick up a book from a old shelf. Ultimately, you know, the cost is probably neutral. It's a, it's a, doesn't require shelf space. It doesn't require shelters to return the book to the shelf. So the exorbitant cost that we pay for ebooks probably is neutral when you figure that, yeah, it's based on the idea that you never have to come here. You come once and get a library card and then you can use the library without ever stepping foot in the building again. And this was the debate we had in 2010. Is it bricks or is it clicks? And reasonable, rational people would say both. And, and then in the end, it looked kind of like, well, clicks is gonna win the day, or bricks is gonna win the day. But we're back in that position where the number of clicks are outweighing the need for bricks. Uh, and so you see all these people coming, not coming through the doors, but checking out stuff online. And those numbers and those wait lists are long. Again, suddenly back to extraordinary amounts that we can't, we're not going to fix with $1.6 million, but.
We're a little way ahead of it.
Yeah, we can start.
So, so we're talking about all these statistics. I assume that the commission is getting the quarterly updates on.
We give them the quarterly updates. I, I, they have their meeting tomorrow night. They're doing the ATB. I don't know, I think they have a couple of others to discuss.
I was just wondering if, if maybe we could see what Amy is giving the commission about. Oh, she knows, because, you know, they're going to the commission, but not us. And I think that would be helpful for people.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to. We have those reports, there are links, you can go on. It's on the webpage now, the quarterly reports, so you can go and see if you'd like. And we can, I can highlight some of the stuff. I mean, you know, traction around the numbers is interesting, but overall growth is good.
Yeah.
But it's, what's not in those numbers that you see is the fact that I know over the summer, we saw, again, profound growth at branches and none.
Do you think it would be useful to have that kind of information attached in the packet next week, along with the budget again, to try and give some context for this? And that's a legitimate question. I don't know what's in it, so I don't know if it would be helpful or not.
Well, let me think about that. I don't know. I, we certainly could put the links to it. It's a lot of data for you guys to, especially if you're new to this, to start to wrap your head around. We measure basically everything. We try to narrow it down to.
Yeah. Summarizing. Yeah. Anyway, just a thought.
We, yeah, it's people, place and stuff. So that's kind of what we do.
Well, anything else on the budget, guys?
David, did you get what you needed for the job offers that we need to make?
I think it's coming up in the director updates.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have it under my director updates later on.
Thanks. Great. So I think our next thing then is over to Kim for considering family coverage options. And we have a draft resolution here.
Yeah. And I think, I don't know if the, if the personal committee was gonna try, was going to make a recommendation or not. Are you, I don't have any district that did not have that. It just, and with your program, I think it's ultimately why you would use this, other than for you cause of the service.
The library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today and we look forward to seeing you again.
We did give notice.
Atención. La biblioteca está cerrada. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy y esperamos verlos nuevamente.
It's closed.
Yeah. Did you guys have a record?
Jen, I can't remember. I don't think we had agreed on a formal recommendation. I mean, I support opting out. I think what we offer is better.
Yeah, I think where we landed was David did an analysis of whether or not there were any subs that even met a sort of minimum threshold of, of hours provided to this, to the library that we would want to do the option of, of withholding and providing access to family for them. And I think where we landed was with their sort of other benefits we could provide, such as possibly an RTD pass or access, you know, paid, paid participation in staff day, some of those things. So we were sort of thinking there's some ancillary benefits we could provide, but that after looking at how many subs we have and the hours they actually put in and sort of what their profile is, a lot of them are retired librarians who kind of come in to cover that we wouldn't, that we'd want to opt out. Is, is that your recollection, Sam?
Yeah, if you're talking about the, the consideration for subs, yes.
Yeah.
You accurately remembered that. Thank you.
Yeah.
So any discussion on this? No, we've talked about it a little bit in the past. We're all okay with looking at the resolution here.
Anyway, you will have to open a public hearing. Close it if you don't hear from anybody.
Okay.
Then you're ready to move forward.
So just to make sure we're all literally on the same page, page 37, the last page of the packet has four numbered items. Number two is the district will or will not facilitate premium collection, which is the collecting for the, so I'm hearing, unless there's any objection, that we're going to check the will not facilitate box. Seeing nods around.
Yes.
Okay. So let's open a public hearing, see if anybody wants to talk to us about opting out of family. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And can we have a motion to approve resolution number 2023 10-1, declining participation in the Colorado paid family and medical leave insurance program?
A motion to.
Of what I said?
Yes. Resolution number 21.
Is there a second? Thank you, Kara, a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye passes. And thanks for clarifying, Jen, for including that extra information in the record. I think that will be helpful.
We'll get this into the statement. We'll have to revisit this in eight years, so you're automatically back in.
Okay, and I assume you want me to sign it after the next meeting? Great. Okay. Review the RFP for auditors is next.
Yeah, do you have any questions? I, so mainly, uh, if you have any questions or comments, like an auditor is a necessity. We're putting out an RFP for auditors for 2023, which I think will be really simple, but also for helping us establish the, um, the setup of the financial software for 2024 and doing the 2024 audit. You know, I, I, I'm not, although I did write the one RFP, a couple of RFPs from scratch. I found this nice one from another library that I believe Kim wrote for them. And then we scrubbed it and turned it around and it worked for us. But if you have any questions, if you don't have any questions, I'll be sending out an RFP too. I believe it's six or seven firms that I have discussed with tomorrow. If you do, if you would like to have a, the finance subcommittee sit in on it or to create an audit committee. I know that question came in from one of you. To be on the interviews for them. Otherwise, it will be me, in all likelihood, Jennifer and David Cox, who you met last week, doing the interviews. And the seven firms, again, I think three local Denver firms, like five or six person shops to up to international firms that have thousands of employees and their headquarters in wherever. That's fine. We're all here. They've all agreed to accept it, turn it around in two weeks.
Any questions on this RFP? Seeing nobody on the screen and nobody here, I think this is so far down in the weeds that not really something we need to be in on, but thanks for sharing it.
Yeah.
I'm very glad you're bringing them on to help set up the structure back to think of.
I don't think in the long term we'll do this, but obviously now it feels right to bring forward to sales. You know what we're doing. I, I don't know what it's even going to cost. It'll be more than $30,000.
But my, my comments were mainly just that they'll report out to the board and eventually or to the finance committee, to the board. And then that probably we need a, just a po, a policy eventually around, you know, frequency or, you know, of, you know, report outs, you know, alerts if they, if there is some discrepancy.
You'll find the, the law pretty much covers all of that.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, good. Yeah, I wasn't sure. All the boards, you know, I'm just trying to bear what I do in the other side.
They, they won't, they will not only provide you with the, the written audit report, but it'll have lots of footnotes that are very educational. And then a second volume that talks about internal controls and anything that they found that could be improved.
Right.
Any errors that they discovered.
Right. And then, great.
I will do it annually. And they will do a report to the board, whether you want them to do that report in person is up to you entirely.
And when in the year is that likely to happen?
I think in May. Yeah, it's six months, six months of budget and six months auditing. Yeah. That's how it works.
I was saying, April.
Yeah, it's gonna be filed by the end of July.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be happy not to be here. Sylvia, you have a question?
Oh, yeah. And. Or a comment. Something I was thinking about regarding auditing is, I think one other area, and obviously, you know, not, no need to get into it right now, but I think one other area where we probably want to look at like some sort of audit or like overview is regarding all of our like security regarding anything related to the software and programs that we're running. I mean, it's always good to kind of check those to make sure that folks can access that information.
Yeah.
Is that something that's this audit or is that built into the IT contract?
That's built into the IT audit. We will have, well, that will be a, I should imagine, a heavy duty audit for the first couple of years. We're, we're good in the sense in which it's not the patron records. Yeah, our entire network will be for the financial transactions that the library does, library district does, not to the financial traction, transactions that the public does, which we outsource. But to.
We also probably need online, so at least what audit committees do in, in other sectors is a support form of like ethics, uh, report process.
That's an excellent idea. So I'm, the other board that I'm on is for the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, and I am a member of that audit committee. And so once we have like a, a running list of all of the things that we're constantly overseeing, and usually we'll have like one or two meetings a year with like the executive, the CEO and like the finance officer and just to ask like simple questions about the risk level for the organization, things that the board needs to note, you know, to be aware of. And, you know, I was just kind of thinking like down the road, maybe those are some things we need to consider. Not exactly the same, but you know, modified to meet our needs.
Oh, yeah. But that's, oh, when we become mature, uh, adult boards. But yeah, that's, it's a, it's a risk. Basically, you do a risk analysis. What are your risks? Like, it's less, I think, important from a, I think, i- i- it may not be as the same as like a private company because you're looking at risks that are going to affect your stock price, right? So like, um, you know, I'll give you an example, uh, China, you know, trade compliance risk that you can't trade with China. This would be a corporate one, right? Like, that would cripple some company. So the, it would, I think that's what Sylvia is talking about. But this is.
Obviously, you would, you know, need to consider like, are there any little, any, any bits of information that we'd want to discuss? But I mean, it's not going to be at the level of like a bank or an institution that's dealing with money. But it'd be something to think about, um, how we can fix that. You know, if we decided we wanted to do that, how we can maintain that oversight for what the library does.
Yeah.
It's a certain extent that proposition H H right now, right? And in the future, it may be shifts in the housing market or commercial market in Boulder. To the extent that.
Oh, you're talking the risks.
The risks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Over. There are such things. I mean, I get invitations to like the Boulder Economic Summit every year. I haven't gone for the past three or four. There may be ways that we can bring board members in if they're interested to go to some of those forums.
So the only thing I would say, you guys, is just don't overcomplicate it.
No, not right now. This is, we're talking, but the biggest thing was like.
And even down the road.
Yeah, I get it.
Governmental entity, not a nonprofit, we're not a company.
Got it. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. This is what, this is what happens when you put a bunch of lawyers on a board.
I know.
The ethics thing I think is important. We do need a way to report.
The statute that delegates your, your powers.
Yeah.
Has like 11 things that you're responsible for.
I know.
And that would be a perfect list.
Yeah, right.
Probably eight of those, you are constantly getting feedback at every meeting.
Right.
And there's.
Oh, that's a good idea. Oh, that's a good idea.
To be coming. Throw those into a status report to a time.
Jen, right now they outnumber us. And that's why Jennifer is, at least you're online, because Jennifer mostly didn't sit out, but right now there's more lawyers. And I believe it's fine online than there are non-lawyers.
You are surrounded.
I took note of it at the beginning. I'm risk averse in respect.
Sylvia, I'm thinking, looking out loud here, you know, we should maybe plan on sitting down with Kim and his team in the November timeframe to go over the list of policies that we're accumulating and put together our plan for, for going forward. I think the notion of sitting down with the library commission to discuss this never went anywhere. But I'm sure Jennifer Ferris can help us with the library's existing policies, because that was one of our starting points. And then we have the list in Douglas County some lists from the state library and such. But maybe if we can sit down and put that all together and bring that to the board, start working on it. That would be great. November.
I do have a list of the external policies and a list of some new policies that we need to, to, to draft, both internal and external.
That'd be great.
You're ready.
So maybe we should include you in that meeting when we set it up with Kim as well.
Early upstairs?
Yeah, she's upstairs. She's crunching on something she's working.
Okay.
She's double tasking.
You think I'm done because we talked about the RFP and the budget? I'm not.
No, I don't think you're done. I don't think you're done. Okay, director's report. What else do you have for us?
I have a bunch of different stuff, like so, there's some that are kind of mission critical, right? So in order for us to meet the first payroll, January twentieth, twenty-first twenty twenty-four, we are going to have to put out job offers to the current staff in the next two weeks. So you said in your conversations, you said in, not opposed to the ballot process, but certainly as part of the library district advisory committee, I believe that temporary IGA states that you would like for all of the current staff to be come over to the library district with their jobs, their titles, their pay and their benefits to the extent possible. We have to make those offers. We found out today, really in the next two weeks. And so like, you won't have finalized the budget yet. But you can tell from the preview of the budget and you'll know next week that the budget more than accounts for all those people. Are you fine with giving me the opening to say like, yes, proceed?
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody not? Yes, as well on the screen. Yeah, go for it.
So we're okay with our benefits package? Like, that's, those costs are pretty solid and you feel good? Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. Just making sure we have all the pieces that we can make the offer. Yeah.
David, what's the, what is the urgency there? I'm just curious what you said you found out today? That we need to do this in two weeks? I'm just curious.
It's the HRIS system. In order for us to fill out the deadlines for the thing, we have to start bringing in people.
Got it.
Sending out job offers. And then once the, once they've accepted, then to begin enrolling them in the system and offering open enrollment for the benefits package, which will probably be within what we, we're October third, it might be a month from now. They're going to be, they're going to be busy getting into open enrollment.
So they can accept our offer but still be working for the city? And start to input their personal information? That's kind of the.
That's correct.
Okay.
They will start to provide the information you require in order to do all the things that we're planning on doing, direct deposit, setting up insurance coverage, all those kinds of things. Yeah, we're, we're coordinating a message, so we're all good with that? We're coordinating a message with HR to go out next week prior to the tenth, so prior to your next meeting. A message, hopefully a joint message will go out from being the head of HR explaining to staff the timeline, the lack of need for them to sign up for a city's open enrollment for health benefits and to recognize that a job offer will be coming down soon. And probably also if HR decides to do that, termination notice from the city. So that their job will cease with the city on December thirty first. So at the very least, it will describe all the things we want to have happen. And it will describe that open enrollment within the city is not necessary for them. It can ignore those emails and that kind of stuff. So that message will be going out maybe as early as Friday. We had planned that all along, to do the timing of a message. And we plan on putting out a message about open enrollment only before next Tuesday, because the city is having a broad all-staff meeting on open enrollment to answer questions. And, you know, not once for it to be dominated by library staff saying like, what about open enrollment for me? So they'd rather focus on the people who will be open enrolling. And so it'll be made clear to them that they're not eligible. So several other things. As far as RFPs, I will be putting one out soon. I don't know exactly how I would go about it yet, on insurance. So mostly around liability and catastrophic, it's like a broker, like what we did with health insurance. So it's about bringing in a broker to describe to us what we need and maybe what we don't need. But that is a assumed cost and with the lease agreement and at least in the manner which was described in the council meeting, and I'm not sure if that's what will be reflected in the IGA. But I think when the IGA is done, we need to have somebody on board so that we can begin shopping for a little bit of insurance. I don't know which committee you want to do that. Or anybody. Or do you want to form an ad hoc committee that would help with hiring an insurance broker? It's again, it's around liability, catastrophic loss, things with regard to the buildings, buildings and people.
I'm happy to help with that. I do it at my job. I don't love it, but I, I spend a lot of time on insurance questions.
You will be able to understand.
So I can speak some of the language.
Yeah.
To help.
Thank you, Kara.
Way beyond my skill. Thank you very much.
It's not, it is not a skill set. It's just a thing that I have exposure to more than the average human. So setting expectations low for my expertise.
So finally, three other things that have to do with the budget coming back around again. So one is, I believe you all agreed to the pay leveling concept. While you have not agreed to yet, but the budget encompasses, because I believe I know what the subcommittee personnel recommends, and that is increasing the minimum wage for all staff to twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents. You want to have a discussion about that tonight? The budget is going to reflect that we will implement that in twenty twenty-four, after we've done the pay leveling. But we're asking for, you know, not only doing that, but then we're also asking employers' council to do a wage analysis to see where any compression may have occurred within the organization. And that's also a budget item, but incidentally, the cost of doing the minimum wage is in your preview. It's less than forty thousand dollars. It's a major deal. I think it goes a long way for those staff members. We make it less than that. It is seventeen people. But that may cause compression. In fact, those seventeen people will all be making the same amount of money, even though some of them have been here for six years. Some of them just start.
So the, sorry, just so I have understanding, the increase for minimum wage is for hourly people and then the pay leveling is for salary?
Pay leveling is for everyone. So in the initial phase of pay leveling, we're estimating around four hundred thousand dollars. I think it'll be slightly less than that. But it's equivalent of about four thousand dollars per person. So if you're a, if you're an hourly employee, it's roughly two dollars an hour increase. And if you were a salaried employee, it's a four thousand dollar increase in your wage. After that, beginning in January, we would begin to implement the minimum wage, which would take those seventeen employees who are not after pay leveling, making at least twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents an hour. And we would bump them up to twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents an hour. That will cost us through the course of the year, forty thousand dollars. Some of them are ten cents ways. One's eight cents away, others are two dollars. But they will all be twenty-two, forty-five. And that overall cost for that, given their number of hours that they work currently, will be about forty thousand dollars for the year.
So to refresh our recollection, we had a conversation about this about a month or so ago when the city released its budget and decided to raise everybody to a minimum wage. We had these seventeen people who weren't there. And my recollection at that time is we bumped it to the staffing subcommittee to look at, because the biggest concern was compression and asked you guys for a recommendation to come back. And what I'm hearing is the recommendation is what David just said.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think that's great.
And we, we talked through the pay compression. I think that's a good plan to address that. So I.
Yeah.
Jen, anything?
No, I got nothing.
So does anybody, I guess I'd frame this, does anybody have any objections to this? I mean, it seems great. So thank you for taking the time to do that. And yeah, go for it.
Two last things, two last quick things, and I, I don't know what direction you want to go in. So we'll bring back the the benefits broker to meet with the personnel subcommittee next week. Plan is for them to come and present to you all in entirety seventeen. I want a time at which I can release the handbook or whatever you want to call it, the package to the staff. I don't know when that is. I'm hoping that he'll sub that out to the personnel subcommittee. So at the point at which they're satisfied to send it out to the entirety of the staff, we will do so. There are a couple of things in there which you have not decided on. Again, it's about HSA matches and about lifestyle spending accounts. And so those are two things that we have discussed at the subcommittee. You know, the staff currently, they get an RTD pass. They get the opportunity to pay us a reduced fee to get gym membership at the recreation center, something like that. So a lifestyle spending account would provide them with a certain amount of money. I don't know what the amount of money would be. That's something for us to cost out and define. But then we would put money into that account, which then they could use to buy whether they wanted an RTPD pass or a gym membership or a Peloton or whatever it is, there are qualified expenses which they would then be able to rebill to us. And without saying like, here, everybody gets an RTD pass whether they use it or not, or here, everybody gets a discount on gym membership whether they use it or not. It would be a certain amount of money which they can spend through several different things. Like, they could get pet insurance. They could do, there's a lot of things that it allows for. Let's see, around healthy living, some around transportation, some of things about like lifestyle choice. So are you comfortable with that as well? And for us to work through that plan, I plan to bring it to the person council committee tomorrow. Not necessarily with a recommendation about how much and look at that and see.
I'm comfortable about it. We've had conversations about that. And I certainly wouldn't hold anything up because of the presentation for us. I think that's informational for us on the seventeenth. So I would definitely say whenever the staffing subcommittee is ready, go for it.
I mean, you're going to have to give them the book, the package when you give them a job offer. So.
Yeah, no, no doubt.
Like.
I'd, I'd like for them to, I mean.
Maybe not this personnel expense thing, but.
I've shared it with the leadership team.
Yeah.
And I think their experience, I don't know how many other, right, two of them talked to me about it today. One, John is surprisingly good. But I would say my characterization of it is, and I, I'm, I'll remain consistent with that, it is a little bit better, a little bit better and a little less expensive. So that is about as far as I'm willing to go. Plus, it has the clinic. So we don't know what the benefits of clinic will be long term. But the plan as a whole is going to look very familiar to them. It is a little bit better. And it's a little less expensive. But that's it. It's not, it's not knock your socks off. The HSA match, I'm proposing something better. And the lifestyle spending account is something they've never had.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah. Okay, one more thing?
Okay, very much.
Ready? Any subcommittee updates?
I'm going to assume silence on my article is acquiescence, unless anybody says anything. Otherwise, some people have said that it's fine.
That's all. It was great.
I sent you an extra quote if you need.
And it went in. Ready to be a star.
And thanks again for doing that.
Yep.
Any trustee matters? Thank you all for letting me know about CalCon and all that sort of stuff. And legal counsel status reporting, including IGA update for.
Nothing new in the stats report. We are passing the IGA back and forth. There are now draft leases that I think I'll propose are just forms to be attached for later filling in all the blanks. I have comments back from the city tomorrow morning. I'm going to make a bunch of changes to the IGA. And then next week, we can talk about those. The, the next draft, I believe, will go into the city council packet just as an update for them, is my understanding.
I strongly disagree with that. And if necessary, I am happy to write to Nurya and Chris about that. I do not think it makes sense to provide city council with a copy of a draft IGA we haven't even seen. And they do not usually get into this level of stuff. I do not think that's a good idea. It's an invitation for them to cherry pick things that they know nothing about.
What I'll do, Johnny, I have an eleven o'clock conference call with them tomorrow. And as soon as that's over.
Okay.
I'll have an email to you.
Great, thank you.
With the result of this.
It's inconsistent with anything we have talked about with Nurya and Chris in our negotiations. They have always said they were going to send them the IGA when we had completed and signed it when it was ready to go, not sending them drafts that they could and if, I'm sure it's, it's the last council meeting that is making them want to share it with them because they guessed the council wrong, but I don't think they want to compound that mistake. Thank you for letting me get that off my chest.
Watch for that about quarter to twelve. That's nearly it. I think next week we'll have a pretty good draft to go through. And I, I think we're going to make it for the end of October, at least we are.
Yeah.
But they do, I don't know.
Yeah, you haven't seen anything major. It's just their usual kind of nitpicky stuff.
I mean, it's a pretty boring document.
It is, yeah.
Remember who's on council.
Right, right.
I can just see Mark Wallace.
Don't get me started.
Yeah. Sorry, Jim, I didn't mean to. We just don't need that.
A lot of the detailed things that, that different people wanted to put in there are already being taken care of. Well, like dominoes, a lot of these contract conveyance and stuff.
Yeah.
Section, I think, we won't even need.
And the basic lease terms, I've been looking at twenty years and, and what we talked about, we can have, we can opt out at five years if two's too. But wonderful. Be nice to have that done. Well, anything else for the good of the order? I think we are through the agenda. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Another good meeting and adjourn.
Kara, did you get my email?
Yes.
Okay.